And I think this public is totally lost.
Yeah.
More of it won't be able to speak.
Oh, sorry. Any kind of device may have been used.
Five minutes.
Yeah, we're all ordered.
Six fourteen.
Yeah.
Any questions? Does the public have anything they want to say?
Yes.
Oh, that's why. Today's April fools. Of course. Well, we are here. We are, we are sort of on the record. So George, really, were, were, do you have any comments you wanted to make?
Me?
Yeah.
I haven't thought about it. Yeah. I just will do the question I asked earlier was what, what do you guys feel? And, you know, as, as, what do you feel is the most impolite pieces? Twenty seven two thing you want to take off? There's this easy stuff and this sort of conventional stuff and everybody making hard stuff. Such for the easy stuff. But I'm just gonna throw up my opinion and see what everybody thinks. There's roughly twenty to twenty-one or twenty-eight two sections that are outlined in twenty seventy-two. And I would suggest that with that many sections, that over a couple of meetings, we go through, say, Apple each meeting and identify them and talk about, you know, some of them have a pretty quick purpose. Pretty limited, pretty quick application area of like ability review. And then we're gonna get into some. And again, this is, I think, where, where we discussed with, with the, with Mark Personeas was narrow our scope. And we're gonna hit on some specific ones that are gonna take more time than we need to spend more attention to. And I would suggest putting those aside and then getting the other ones out of the way first. Get all of these ones where we don't have any contentious issues or we don't have anything that we have to deal with. And then go back to those few, because I think there are a few.
I'm upset.
And, and, and look at them in depth and deal with them in depth. If that makes sense to everybody, that, I think that's probably the best way to report them.
And what I was proposing was that, based on the things that the government can provide. And how such a part of that is talk about problems, come up with a list of the problems. And what I think they're doing in this document, which we will just put in tonight, is list the problems. So that kind of narrows the scope first of all. And these are common problems we're all talking about. And then other problems can, can pop up and Kirk Allison can come up with a few deep code issues that none of us have thought of. But anyway, then you apply solutions to those list of problems. Because I'm, I'm pretty sure that what Cliff would prefer, or what I think would be good for the committee, is that we don't necessarily give code changes directly to Cliff to ponder. They could do that too. And we come up with code ideas specifically and can give those. But we give them the list of problems and solutions that we think makes sense for us, for the community. And then we go into the process of actually modifying code to fit those problems and fix those problems.
So it's a, just, I think that's a perfectly, perfectly good idea. But we dug tail out into what I suggested. And identify those issues that you have or any of us have. At the same time, we're going through these specific code numbers. So we can cross those code numbers and say, we might get a deal over.
Sure.
And then.
Yeah, does this code, what you're saying is code number X, Y, Z, does it bring up any problems or does it solve any problems?
Exactly. Dot, dot ten, dot twenty, dot twenty-two, et cetera. And then when there's a problem, we identify it, we put that to the side. And then we'll go back to those after we've cleared the docket of everything that we think is, is beyond approach. And then start dealing with things that have issues.
Yeah.
Okay.
And hopefully that will speed the process. And we can get down to the day-to-day, and then we can get more input from the community at hopefully one of the Saturday meetings. So we're getting some serious conversation about this stuff.
Good. And that could basically be the focus of the line.
Yeah.
Yes, could be the do your.
Which is.
Where's your?
Yeah. I mean, anybody else has.
No, I have to agree.
The next proposal is when? This is our first public meeting of the, of the month.
Yeah, there is a second one this month.
A special one?
Yeah. On Saturday.
What's our regular?
Sixteen.
Sixteen, yeah. Sixteen blocks.
Eighteenth is regular and sixteenth is.
Oh, it's regular, Tuesday. Oh, Tuesday is sixteen.
Yeah.
Sixteen is a Tuesday. Okay, there you go.
And David, one of the items that Mark points out that I thought were important.
He, he did, he just said to narrow the focus and the best way to do that. I've got some suggestions, but I'm happy to share them. Because I went through them and looked at things that I think are important. Beyond that, there may be others that are important, so.
Oh, bring your items.
My item was dot zero five zero permitted uses. Dot one three zero, which is administrative approval uses. Dot one five zero conditional uses. Dot two hundred, which is prohibited uses. And dot six five three, which is landscaping, tree, and retention. So those, those were the.
What was your last thought? About what?
Uh, six five three. It's landscaping, tree, and retention. The rest I saw as either already covered through the design guidelines, which I don't think we should change at all. We should leave those as is.
My, I'm gonna say. I think, I think we should work on them. I think that, and here's the issue, is that I think that the, the, the spirit, if not maybe the reason, was to make sure the design guidelines don't have as many legalistic teeth as the code. It's supposed to move in the code. But when I really read them, there are, I don't say many, I don't know how many shells there are. The shell is the, the turnover or you must do this. It's not like we recommend it, we'd like you to do it, it's nothing like that. There's shells in there. And we ought to look, at least look at the shells and decide, oh, and maybe add some shells. Maybe if you were to do them all, maybe add, at least somebody should take a look at it. Maybe we don't even do that this year.
And, and, no, I think that's good. But I think what we do is we, we add the design guidelines as another thing that we have to look at. So now, you know, because they were amended in twenty seventy-two. So let's, let's have a look at that as one of these items that we need to address and then go through.
Where'd she get that? What's that document?
That's the design guidelines.
That's online.
Okay.
It's a little weird where they put it. It's there.
Does that, I think, be the only one we have on our list? David didn't mention. They're all identical, other than we actually had the building setback one on ours as well, just to.
Point three five zero.
Point three five zero. And that was just to address the issue of the fifty-foot setback all the way down Taiyi that originally was only meant to be proportion of Taiyi at the border. But somehow it got written to be all of Taiyi.
And both as well as?
No, it's just Taiyi. It's got this, yeah, a development goal.
And that was because that was moved into resort commercials, if I'm not mistaken.
No, that's not, it's, um, Taiyi originally, when they wrote twenty seventy-two, the idea was a fifty-foot buffer on the beginning of Taiyi and on Roosevelt, which just were right at the border, so we didn't have what we have right now, with that M R D right up there. But when they wrote it, they didn't say the first so ever any hundred feet. It ended up extending all the way down Taiyi. So the properties right now that are between, like, the bank and Benson and stuff can't be built on because there's a fifty-foot setback. And there's wetlands in the back. So in speaking to the people who originally, some of the people who were on the original twenty seventy-two, they're like, it wasn't supposed to be all of Taiyi.
Well, and that's perfect. So that, I mean, between two groups anyway, so far, we've, you know, we really have one, two, three, four, five, six, and then the design guidelines, seven items in the code of twenty-two.
No, that's.
You always narrow the scope already.
No.
Well, having that section between the marketplace and Benson, a fifty-foot setback.
Yes, I think so.
It's supposed to be done with that.
Yeah. Well, it's called.
It's called a commercial.
It's called a commercial.
Well, there was actually a guy who wanted to buy that. And he had looked at the actual county code, which said thirty-foot setback, ten foot with a variance if you stick your parking in the back. So he thought, great, I'll do ten-foot variance, have a sidewalk right over front, great. And then they're like, no, it's a fifty-foot setback. And he's like, they measured it out, he's like, fifty-foot setback, wetlands, ain't gonna happen, not gonna buy it. I'm not gonna put in, right? Not gonna happen. So we lost the potential. And what he wanted was developmental longer. He was gonna put shops at the bottom with residential at the top, one driveway down the middle, parking in the back. And it was gonna be this nice little, you know, you walk off the sidewalk, into the businesses.
Yeah.
That was twelve years ago.
Yeah. I think, I mean, to my personal opinion, I thought the whole thing is that if you start figuring out this place that it's more than big and we're proposing ways of laws on this town.
Yes.
And I'm sure it will get to this time. Because if we really can develop the town, the way my person would see it, it's gonna be pretty tight to the river. And I think it really shouldn't, it should be walkable.
Yeah.
You know, there's a whole concept about making towns and villages accessible by people as opposed to automobiles. It makes a lot of sense. I spoke to a woman yesterday at, at the Shell Center. She was there with four of her adults and nine kids, and there are like bicycles all of them. And she said, we just finished doing San Juan tour. We're gonna just say, pretty soon, automobiles, particularly once it's huge, they're gonna be out. Out of, you know, in some other dimension. I mean, if we can focus on getting the place to be that kind of investment in place, people will come here for that reason. You know, it's easy. Just come on, go in on, and let me run over and watch. So anyway, that's, I don't know if we see it. Come back.
That's the vision.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's. That's a vision for a human engineering place as opposed to normalized vehicle. We shouldn't require parking, so much parking. Every parking place is an enormous piece of business, particularly this.
Well, there are, there are code state and county codes. And the author knows way more than I do, I bet, on this. They, um, parking, I know they had trouble here, parking here before they could go to the library. The parking lots and parking spaces weren't up to code. And they didn't put out enough, I don't know what the solution was, they changed something.
Oh, yeah. Probably had to put a shared parking agreement between the library and.
Okay, that's how you solved it, yeah. But they have, they have regulations about how many you can have. I know in golf, to change subjects like that, uh, golf, they get dumb, that our golf, um, is, area is prohibited for having parking in front, they want parking back. But that's for your, your.
Well, there's no on-road permit, allowed on.
Right.
So it's on the road, on the road.
Yeah, well, let's come and take a mention here, the operation of the road. The thing, if you get twenty-eighty, which you can do quite a lot, twenty-eighty is to hold parking vehicles, listen to that, hold it by the roads. That's referred to in twenty seventy-two. If you look at it, it's enormous. It's an enormous bit of information. And all of this about parking restriction, what you can't, can't do and all that stuff. And if we looked at that, and you buy it, proportion of twenty-eighty, we'd be meaningful. Golf Road could have on-street parking, not, not parallel parking, but angle parking on both sides for a lot of it. And it would allow, if we cover the pitch, and that's twenty-two feet of land to do that. So those kind of ideas are the things I think we, we're gonna talk about design restrictions, design, you know, elements. If we play that into our plan, then you, we're not in that area, obviously. When we get there, basically, we're gonna start doing that. We wanna go back to the code. We wanna have that open for design, design, whatever that term helps with.
Design guidelines.
Design guidelines. Instead of saying, oh crap, we're gonna get done with this.
Well, Gulf Road parking needs to be addressed because the code states if you are a retail or office space, it's one parking space per two hundred square feet. If you're a restaurant, it's one parking space per hundred square feet. Which you're not going to get with the small block size on Gulf Road. So it definitely would be something that needs to be addressed if you want to increase business.
Yeah, the first, yeah, the first thing to say is one parking lot.
If it's, if it's business, like if you're an office space or retail, it's one or two hundred square feet.
Two hundred.
If it's a, if it's a restaurant, it's one per hundred square feet.
You know who loves this kind of stuff? Automobile salespeople and guys that do concrete work and have the bad parking. This is an enormous business, this parking lot. And we're not, we're not gonna need it.
Well, it's like in the design plan, it did suggest, if you read the entire thing. But on Gulf Road, they suggested a community parking lot that would service multiple businesses. So basically, if one person wanted to buy a piece of property, put the parking lot on that piece of property, and then all of the businesses then have an agreement on it. And basically paying them to be able to have the site.
Yeah, I agree with that, that's interesting.
Right? That is an option.
Cities that have, and towns, and cities that have walking mall business situations, it's, it's a, it's a magnet for people. Now, it's Australia, and Adelaide, it's a huge, it's a huge city, once upon a while. And in, and it was laid out with really wide streets, big, you know, good hours for them. They took one old street and for several blocks, it's called the old cars and the car. And it's like the place to be. And the stores are all, I mean, it's huge. It's huge, open, sort of mall situation. And that's the most popular place in the city for people. And so we, we're not there, but if we make it, it's like pedestrian, pedestrian's over here. And they open wallets essentially.
Now, also for parking, I was thinking, I'm kidding you, because it'd be good if it was restricted to say seven AM and midnight for, you know, for commerce and things. And then the rest of the time, no parking or somehow restricted. So you don't get the, the problem that a lot of towns face is that you get people in R Vs and all that, or not to pick R Vs, but just cars, people sleeping in cars, R Vs or whatever, on the main drag, let's say, golf only, during the night hours. And you'd like to restrict that. I don't think that would be a problem. I don't know how other cities do that exact specification, but it makes sense to have some kind of restriction.
Well, first, somehow get the on-street parking restriction removed from Gulf Road.
Yeah, well, a lot of places said you can't stay on the street. It's pretty straight all the time.
So that's the regulation.
Because right now, as a business, you cannot include any on-street parking in your parking plan when you go to get a permit. And you say, okay, this is how many parking spaces I have. You can't say, oh, well, in front of my business, I can fit three cars. And include those into your parking plan to show that you have enough parking. They don't, or they're coming right now, doesn't allow you to do that. Which is why, like, for example, the cafe has a parking agreement because there's not enough parking spaces in the actual lot. Because I did that parking agreement back in the day. And tried to design the parking lot to figure out how to get the number of spaces that was required. And it was, well, they can't.
Yeah.
Right? And they, and they said, well, but there's spaces out front. They said, no. Okay.
What, if you reference twenty-eighty, it's a huge, so question marks.
Can I ask, what was that agreement, agreement at, like?
You just have to have an agreement with the, with another park, somebody who has a parking lot within so many hundred feet that they have enough extra spaces that will accommodate you.
So was there an agreement with the roof stairs or something?
There's an agreement with somebody, it doesn't really matter who, we just put, I'm just saying that as an example, that that can be done as long as another business has enough extra spaces.
Is there a place that has been identified that might be a good parking lot so that, that would solve street parking? And the businesses wouldn't need parking? Is there, is there a particular lot that that community parking has been thought of?
The obvious one is the one that, that was simple. Park it, that's, that's, well, that's, you know, that's still some space for the parking lot.
So. No, I mean, an idea for, I guess, retail parking instead, is it some, an idea for a, a particular piece of property that that would work?
I don't think so, but the existing law, you said it had to be within seven hundred feet.
Mm-hmm. Seven hundred feet.
Within seven hundred feet of its proposed usage. So if there's a parking lot, the, and so reuse has to be within seven hundred feet, otherwise it's not a, a parking lot for that use.
So seven hundred feet's a pretty good.
Otherwise, it says the parking lots shall be provided only at the rear, the rear side of the buildings.
Yeah. How about the?
Unless you are existing on the property.
Yeah.
How about Fred, that says gravel lot that he was gonna put the greenhouses on, and then decided not to. I don't know if Fred's gonna do any of that. There's a nice lot, already gravel, right there.
It's within seven hundred feet.
Yeah.
It might be, because that would all the businesses.
Yeah. Yeah. If he has a few parking spots in the back and on the side with a gas station, that's, but, but still, that would help.
Yeah, it's seven hundred feet from each car, which doesn't get you far enough down Gulf Road to really do a whole lot.
Well, I think would be a change, you know? I mean, it's, that, that no reason why we shouldn't have people on that big lot.
That's standard county code. And that's actually universal building code, not just county code.
It's in twenty seventy-two though.
Yeah, but it's also, it's a copy of the building code, which is actually a copy out of the universal building code.
Because it states that the, the, the parking has to conform to twenty-eighty-five hundred, when you're talking about. And then it goes on unless otherwise specified.
And that's a lot of people should just go ahead and make it otherwise.
Well, if you have specifications, yeah. And we can, that's something that we can look at too, which is other sections.
So, so what if a, what if a parking lot also had these electric and so on bike shit or whatever it is right there? So people were encouraged to kind of park their car and get on an alternate walk or get on an alternative method of transportation at the same place?
What about electric shit? I mean, this, this all kind of.
There's, there's provisions in the county code for electric cars. It's been updated. Twenty seventy-two doesn't have any provisions for it, because it hasn't been touched. So that's certainly something that can be looked at to encourage use of electric cars.
Or, I mean, even electric bikes or anything. They kind of parked their car and then they'd be invited to use a number of other choices. Like walking, electric bikes, electric shuttle, whatever, and, and get over there.
I think it's really a factor of the weight that the town gets to build. Because if you say it has to be so-and-so and so-and-so feet, whatever, and then all of a sudden you went away from there. We're seven hundred and thirty-five feet from where we felt we were gonna have to be, and that's the limit. So if we plan it as a comprehensive thing, town itself, then you start on the license. But, but to do that, it seems kind of, you know. Flexibility built into, into the parking.
So theoretically, if every seven hundred feet, there was a space to park a car and an alternative multimodal transportation method available, that would solve everything in the county laws?
Well, yes and no, because the number of businesses and number of parking spots, based on you, still have to add up to be that.
So then the number, the numbers would have to be right.
The numbers still have to be, yeah.
If it's a restaurant, you need one per hundred.
Right, yeah.
Any other business, right, or two hundred square feet.
So if they say, okay, well, we have ten businesses, this is the square footage, you need two hundred parking spaces, you need to say there's two hundred parking spaces, and basically that, you know, they're designated for those businesses.
So like, like Saltwater, the restaurant's about a thousand square feet. So if I said it was just a guest, divided by two hundred, that's five parking spots, that's about what you have.
Ten, okay, so a restaurant.
Ten, oh, ten, oh, right, restaurant. So two hundred per one restaurant?
Yeah.
Yeah. Hundred, that's great. That sounds all viable. Well, we just gotta tear down some buildings.
Yeah, where do you, where do you want it?
You're gonna get out, right, the transportation solution.
To get that many parking spots is a lot, because I had, my parking lot, the range was fairly big, and I only had fifty parking spaces.
Fifty, is that?
So.
The county knows we got this goofy situation. Personeas said today, and I'm sitting in his office, we gotta say, well, how far can you go with this change? He goes, as long as it's not completely crazy and illegal, we'd probably go for it. You know, so I think what we should do is sort of stretch those guidelines to accept what we're gonna give. Just decide what we really, really, really want. And then say, okay, guys, this is what we really, really, we want. And then it goes, is it, yeah, I mean, it's gonna be impossible to get past you guys? And sort of work it from a position of power, because if we don't decide what we're gonna do, those people don't want, they're not gonna let us leave. It's insane.
Right, and that's what I was talking about earlier. One way to handle, kind of, get this together is also to look at the problems. And, and it's just solutions, but also present, not just our final stats of our code, which may be great stuff. Present the list of problems and maybe some solutions with them to, to the guys and, to Cliff and company. And they can also work on that. And it's a simple question, how do we increase parking on, on Gulf Road? Would we do more on the street? Do we do, do some parking lots? Can we get some variances, like, like instead of seven hundred feet, we do a thousand feet, you know? And let them decide what legally they can do.
Yeah, so if we say that we wanna have it way more pedestrian in front of the easy and safe, and maybe slow the speed down a little, and say, how can you do it?
Yeah.
And they'll say, well, you have to do so, it's all the money, I'm sure.
Right, words is. Well, these are concerns, what you're raising. They're concerns that people raise on a daily basis, whether it's on the next door or on the interface or pause. These issues drop back on a regular basis, so it's not something that we don't see routinely.
If you wanna see public works come completely crazy, walk off the Seabrook, and look at the way they make it, what they make us do with roads, and that enormous, it, it would actually stop a train, not just from the vehicle park, it's physically stopped, that thing at the end of the spur of the. It was enormously expensive, stop thing at the end of the spur of the next to the greenhouse. You can see it going wild away. It's huge. And they made us do that. We have a simple fence, the post, the aluminum brass, brown, you know.
Why, is that, is that a natural orange?
It's, you know, it's like, well, there's a railroad, you know, trying to stop.
I mean, does the official road go stop there?
It goes, oh, yeah, right. And not only did they make it stupid in orange, they changed their minds and made it stupid in red and moved the exit this damn direction. I mean, it was absolutely insane. And that was public work saying, you have to do this because we say so. And they had to provide the, you know, rocks, so there was no way to change it. But that's the kind of thing that they were gonna be fighting in the sense, is that, you know, the main thing that public works particularly have, that everything is a road. And then other stuff on the outside of the road, it's not, it's all natural. That's, that's where they're coming from. So, I mean, I hate to be sarcastic about it, but it's, it's beyond insanity. So if we take that business and look at it as, as a, yeah, we're basically very far between this and this. Just go ahead and let's really find, maybe we can. I'll just run it on my mouth, but I think that it's a, the, the, the has to be come from a position of, we're in charge. As they said, we were, you know, because they're running the community law, and they're like, okay, fine, here it is. And if they say, take it well.
It might be interesting for everyone to know, I found out that in public works budget, since Leonard Philteer retired, they had had in their budget, and they were used, and they advertised for it, a position for a full-time county worker in Clay Harries.
They have it in the budget.
It's in their budget, it's in their budget this year again. It's been in their budget since Leonard retired, that they're, and they actually get paid more than the regular county workers because they have to live here. And they are supposed to be on call, that, you know, they get a call in that, hey, a cop signs been knocked over there, fifteen minutes to respond, they go there. Um, but that job has been available, never been listed, uh, never been built, but it's in the county works budget ever since Leonard retired, and I think Leonard retired.
For thirty years.
And probably about twenty years ago.
Well, do we get all that money back?
It just keeps sitting in the public works budget and goes to whatever, but.
They say more than twenty years, because he wasn't, he's two hundred and twenty-five.
It is more than twenty years, but. It is more than twenty years, but anyway.
There was way these ninety, or way at seven hundred and ninety.
But that would be also something that we can naturally buy from the county of, hey, this has been in your budget for twenty years, we don't have this person, why is it never advertised? It would be nice to have that person.
Could they do just about anything that has to do with the road?
Anything that the public works does, they have hot holds, big stop signs?
Basically, if either it snows, they're supposed to get up, go get out of the snow cloud and start doing the roads, you know, something driving up the, you know. You know, anything that happens. You know, anything that happens, you know, like when there was a big windstorm, they would've been out right away doing stuff, thinnering the roads, with the change valve, getting stuff done. But I just think that that's absolutely ridiculous, that county workers had that in their budget for all this time.
I, I, I might just want to say, and I'm actually, in general, I thought big compositions, but I really want this being the end, and I will, I will opt on twenty seventy two. But I actually, I mean, I look at people, you have somebody applying that job.
No, it's already that.
So what, they got up to the average, they got twenty, just give someone four hours. There's nothing way to handle it. People just showing up.
Right.
And then else on twenty seventy two, I, I really wasn't trying to cut that off, I, I don't know. Is twenty seventy two just without the business district, or is it going to the rest of the city?
They all, yeah, seventy two. Sorry, all twenty seventy.
Does it, does it affect other places than, um, than downtown?
There's some roads.
And what I wanna bring up is affordable housing, the idea of, uh, that smaller houses are allowed. That it possibly, even that if, um, someone wanted to subdivide the land instead of being a bunch of, uh, monster homes. That, that maybe it would be, um, encouraged, I don't know how that would be incentivized, that we would have smaller homes. Um, almost that kind of villagey housing development for at least smaller home or two on, on normal lots. So that no matter what, we never, we always have affordable housing for, um, residents. And, and that can also allow a certain amount of flexibility, land use do. So I don't know what the size of the homes are allowed to be on a regular lot now. Do, do you know, Allison, the minimum size?
It depends on what it is. There is something, that's a motor zone. Um, I know your garage cannot exceed a certain percentage of your home square footage. But there is something in the rural zoning which does allow for multiple small homes.
Using additional zoning specifically called for, in order to keep more open space, they would allow more clustering, so you could, I don't know, all that's wrong. They couldn't condos or other kinds of things where they can put. Yeah, so that idea of, just to be able to build smaller homes on lots. Um, um, you know, the idea, I don't know if you've looked at the trend with bigger houses, the trend is, is disappearing. Even people who build a lot of big houses don't even wanna live in them anymore. So the, the trend is smaller homes, it's a major trend, even for people with big money, it's a major trend.
Well, your house, your house can't exceed a certain percentage of your lot anyway, because you can only have so much of your surface.
But is there a minimum, is what I'm asking?
I'm not, I'm not sure.
I think there is, but I don't.
There is, there is, I'm not sure of the number, if it's a minimum.
Well, I talked to. There's a minimum lot size in twenty seventy two, or there's a maximum density.
Fifteen thousand.
It's guaranteed to be able to put subjects along.
You're telling me, you know, that's a lot size.
That's a lot size.
That's not the house size. I, when I talked to the county about the small home that we're working on, I mean, um, and they said, no, it can be really tiny, but it's kind of neat, the residency requirement, you know? You gotta have a kitchen, you gotta have a bathroom, even nowadays, you have to have a laundry room, you have to have certain energy requirements, and that takes a certain space. You know, and, and, uh, I think I asked, is there actually a zero size? Can you do it ten square feet? No, you can't. But it's not necessarily written in the code, I think it comes down to the building guys, when you're applying for, for your permit. They say, no, that doesn't meet our residency requirement design, so.
It has to have a laundry room or a washer and dryer.
Has to have, not a room, but you gotta wash, have a water and dryer, and you didn't use your app to.
There is no minimum size, I'm looking at it right now, it's just that you can only have one per. The only thing that lists size is that by code, you can't have bigger than two hundred square feet accessory building.
Around, the four hundred square feet is a number that designates a house as opposed to a trailer or some other kind of. And, I mean, you can have, you can have a building that's, that's, like a lodge, it's four hundred square feet plus, and this is considered a house. And if it's less than four hundred square feet, you can consider trailer or some other designation, I don't know, I'm sure. Uh, what county, other counties in the state?
So wouldn't it be good if we always had lots of affordable housing in Clay Harries? Almost every community in the world is dying from the lack of affordable housing. Just because we supposedly still have it now, some locals would disagree and say that we almost lost what, what was affordable housing. But there is a way to incentivize.
They have lots of tiny houses, they've never made them, so they're basically summer cottages. I mean, they could barely be much smaller, you know, but they exist, we have, we have more, there are, there are probably all communities have.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so if you're talking about affordable housing.
But I think, I think it's land that's making them affordable, not the house.
I mean, so the idea of having two or three of them on a lot, not everywhere, but in some cases, where it's appropriate. But it's never underlying a value on this real estate, never done in a, you know, tacky, uh, uh, dimin, you know, diminishing way. I, I mean, not, I mean, something that would be really enhancing of, of the other people's, they got it. People who have big houses still think this was a good idea, if you done some days for it.
Well, if you have a business on GoPro, and it's a retail downstairs, then you've got two units upstairs, then you've essentially got three units. You've got, what, and you can, in, in small town commercial, you can have as many as ten units. And so if you think about living situations upstairs from businesses, that's what happens all over the country, all over the world. And so I think if we can focus on not just having individual houses on lots, and instead of having buildings that accommodate more than one use.
Sure.
In a business, then you still could work with.
What I'm saying, so all the people don't wanna live apart, just gotta have, just will never see it, right?
Then you can, then you can concentrate the infrastructure, second, water, power, the whole deal. And it gives people a liv, living downtown, too. You're right down, you can walk.
Yeah, that's the densification.
Some downstairs, walk to the grocery store, walk to the.
Yeah, I, I know the densification model, that's not, that's not only what I mean.
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
Some people want to live this nature and, and not live in, even in the town environment. I agree with that idea, but I'm saying as well, I, I think that we should have a multitude of small, you know, of modest living, um, um, options. And, and it should be incentivized somehow. Um, um, I spoke to this, this woman from Flossom yesterday, and she is just sick for the worst part of. She wasn't being negative or anything like that, but she's just like, oh, my God, there's no more affordable housing here anymore, they're just strip mall-ing it. Um, all these, you know, tacky, you know, developments and so on, and she doesn't know what to do, she just feels so unat home.
And we're not a third head.
It's awesome, it's awesome. And she was, she wasn't, I'm complaining, I was kind of asking her, you know, how it was going up here and how it's going now, and just trying to get her perspective. And I, you know, we've done a lot of good green and all that now, but I just don't think we should take it for granted. I think we need to design solutions into the zoning so that we never end up with, with the things that are plaguing these other communities. Where people don't know how they fit in, they don't know how they can afford to live, they don't know how they can start up their own business, it, it's just too hard to, to plug in. And, and I think if, when we do all this, we, we consider, um, the, the type of displacement that's going on in other communities. And we literally design the solutions into this community, I think will just be, will be so great, you know? I, I just, I don't think we should take for granted, and we should design the solutions that we see problems with happening everywhere else. Small affordable houses, beautiful, that type of thing. So I don't know how that would come into this, you know, to, 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 to review the size of the house that's allowed. To possibly allow two or three houses in some lots, shared separate systems, I don't know. Again, I'm not trying to turn it into some shanty town, that's not what I mean. Um, um, to find out all the creative possibilities. And, um, and then, and then along with that, we have our, what we call low-impact tourism, where people, you know, be like going back to village life for them and, and, you know. But, but yet, we have built in our solutions for our, our housing in the future. Um, and I think, and also there's an industry going that way, you all know. Among the, among the biggest growth part of the home building business now is these little houses that started to crop up. A lot, um, Sean and Jamie and Jeff Paltsch, there's a few people who are starting one. Um, it's, it's a, it's a growth, um, business model, so, so, and it can have to do with pre-making buildings in Clay Harries. It could actually, um, help give birth to new aspects of the building industry as well. So it's an economic development idea as well, is what I'm saying.
You're never gonna control through code property, so it's not gonna happen. But what could be happening is under the rural code of Waukesha County, I just found it. It is a section which refers to only the foothills subarea of Waukesha County. But it does allow in that area, which could extend it quite a while, if we added it to the code. That says that rental cabins together with meeting facilities or whatever you wanna do, can be done in the rural area on acreage. And it tells you how many that you can put on it, so you're talking about doing acreage, small cabins for rentals or whatever, that is a possibility through the rural code. Right now, it specifies only in the foothill area of Waukesha County, we could say, and point yards. So if somebody didn't wanna go buy a five or ten acre parcel, put a septic on it, that they could go ahead and be able to put, you can put five per five acres. And it's five per five acres, each not exceeding three sleeping units.
Plus that.
So, cause like, that's like, you can, you know, no, this is like, if you wanna put a whole bunch of these small cabins.
Yeah.
You can do.
Up to five, three bedrooms on five acres.
Right. Plus the house, or that's it?
That's it.
That's one unit per acre then?
Right, it's one per acre, but you don't actually have to subdivide it, it's all under one property and it's considered rental cabins.
Right.
So it would then possibly create more places for people to rent, there is that option in the actual code. It would just have to be, instead of saying only in the foothills or point yards.
Does the state have to be long-term or short-term rental?
Long-term zoning, how is that different?
Yeah.
Were you studying it?
I have a transition.
Because I, I know when Rosser, uh, tried to get that done, and he got it done, it, it's theory at least was, this whole place is kind of built up. We at least need a strip that where it, you have to require a certain amount of wood, and therefore you can push some of the houses closer together. It didn't exactly do that Seabrook, but it did meet the, the T Z requirements, but you could actually push, uh, then not, townhouses necessarily, small rooms closer together. And therefore keep a little more green space. That was the vision at least.
There is green space up at Seabrook, I'm not.
Fifty percent, yeah. But still, those are individual homes, he could've, they could've, I talked to him about it, they could've put them even closer together, but then they went, still, that wasn't the vision at Seabrook. Whatever, not thinking of Seabrook. So my point is, you know, is absolutely not to turn this whole place into a bunch of, what do you call it, Airbnb's. That is also, I don't know if you've been studying it, can devastate the communities. Um, big cities and other communities, Airbnb, um, can wipe out all the, uh, affordable housing as well. So I don't know, again, how that could be zoned, that, um, if there are short-term rentals, that it's absolutely balanced with, um, uh, a readily amount of, of, of non-short-term rents. You know, like, I don't know if it could be where, say, you could only have, you know, again, I'm not just a regulation, you could only have a short-term rental on a property if you had another unit that was, uh, long-term rental, you know.
That's against it, you can't do it.
Yeah, I, I'm just, I'm just shooting it out there, right? Um, you meeting? No, elaborate, next door.
Oh, hi.
Next door, okay.
Oh, next door.
This meeting about money. Oh, so anyway, the, the point, the point again is to, uh, never, never let affordable, um, modest homes disappear from life. Put them in zoning and install it.
Right, possible.
Yeah, right, because they can't, I, I do not mean turn this whole place into a bunch of Airbnb, you know, can't stop, uh, uh, you know, places either. That's not, that's not what I mean. You know, that if there's any short-term, it's always this plenty of, uh, of places for residents and people who wanna move here. Um, you know, again, start up something or at least start a business or form a, um, and so on. Airbnb may be legally challenged, I'm hearing. Because, uh, it, cause, you know, you only have some zoning for bed breakfasts and hotels and all that. And putting, you know, four A rooms, okay, which is basically like a bed breakfast. Uh, without the zoning, it is an issue that, that will challenge the laws, and some people may, I mean, some groups are already trying to channel down, I don't know if it's gonna happen, but it's interesting. Are Airbnb's allowed in Clay Harries, or is it against the zoning?
There's no code against it.
Yes, yes, okay, yeah.
They aren't prohibited, yeah.
It's allowed.
This year, they're starting collecting a lot of tax forms.
Ah, there you go.
That's the thing, they're talking for VRBOs.
Right, and Canadians have to use a agent to get all of their shop.
Well, the reality is, if you want to have a place to come and rent for a couple of days and cover problems, it's pretty much the only option. I mean, I don't think what they're doing, and I don't blame them, I can see why people would want that, because we don't have hotels, and no one wants to sign a house. You know, so I don't think we should kill that prospect, maybe limiting is okay, um, but at the same time, if we don't think about accommodations being a need. Then we sort of lose this, because we, people driving in this town, and that's Africa, and ask this question, so when, what can I do to rent in my life? Do I like to hang out for a couple of days and so, something like that? It's awesome.
I meant, I guess it's a housing, is what I'm saying.
But the, the whole thing, Joe, it's not in mind. If you have a couple million bucks, you wanna invest in something, we're not gonna invest in something, it's not gonna make you return. And if you buy a property, you built like a house, I'm gonna, and you're not in the issue, you're money back, you're not gonna be interested in anything.
I don't mean that.
But I'm saying, you know, when you think about a person who's got to move to New York, where do they come from? Their self-interest is important for them.
Sure.
So if you're gonna use something like affordable housing, who's gonna pay for it, is the question. You know, who's, who's gonna be the person who does this? An individual owner or by the?
I think individual owners would be ideal.
Yeah, well, my just be yes, but how many people can really do that? Can you pull it up?
Um, with the right type of, uh, um, resource network.
Yeah, yeah, what I'm saying, yeah, but like, you know.
Um, I, I, I've got a, I've got a warning I'm working on, I know how people can make access for a lot of, you know. We've got to think of the laws that.
Anyway, I think our office still has.
Yeah.
So the answer to transitional zoning is no for multiple units per property, but yes to bed breakfasts?
I don't know, what?
No to multiple housing?
Like parking.
You give me rural.
Right.
Like rural allows the multiple cabins, it does not have transitional, transitional does allow for bed breakfasts. Thank you.
What is a dense sleepers small town commercial?
Well, it's not a good commercial, just.
I think it's, yeah. Depending if you have separate system.
Yes.
You know, uh. You have, uh.
Twenty sixty-one, what do you wanna know?
For the density, for that, for, uh, the unit living density.
Maximum density.
For that, for some, I'm wondering.
Uh, let's see, it has, hotels and motels cannot exceed the ratio of point six. Deflexions cannot exceed the max density of six dwellings per acre.
Six dwellings per acre?
Six dwellings, so it's a two by two.
Cause it makes the amount of flex rate, so you can't have more than. Six dwellings per acre. Six dwellings per acre.
So I guess the word would be, there's a lot of sticky questions about this in the name. Twenty sixty, what are the other patches or pieces in the code? So that's like a box of questions.
One of our tactics, we're gonna problems, and like, and let our experts, you know, kind of work out where we can actually solve it in the code, or where it cannot. And there are solutions outside the codes, we all said, saying, government said, you know, I wouldn't use it as a big one. Zoning ain't gonna solve all our problems, we need partners and other things too, you've been saying, you know, so. We all agree that that's true, so this group, I hope, well, at least on the side, started to make up a list of, you know, we could use one of these kind of partners, we can use this kind of thing, you know? And, and be able to, to add a community, have such a list. And so when people ask us, whoever they're asking to, whoever, how can I do this here? Hey, we have a list of, of kind of people we need here, kinds of businesses we might need here, all that kind of stuff. That would be useful, for a city planning, since without a city, you have to try somehow to come up with that.
Well, and your answer is, a commercial business cannot exceed twenty-five hundred square feet for seventy percent of the law. In small town commercial?
Twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five hundred square feet, total floor area per establishment, or seventy percent of the law.
But didn't they have a, any administrative version of that? Nevertheless, the, uh, looking for a hearing.
That's on your standard, not going into, if you wanna get a conditional.
Yeah, that's standard, that's the permanent.
I'm just giving you the standard. Easy, easy permit, go in that.
Okay. I want your office to propose. I made the motion. Thank you all.